And welcome to the Holyoke Public Schools Committee Meeting. Today is Monday, December nineteenth, and the time is six oh one. Ms. Garcia, can you please do roll call?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
President.
Now. Mary. Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Here.
Yano.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone, for being here with us today. I know that yesterday was the start of Hanukkah, so I really appreciate you all being here this evening. I just want to remind everyone that the Governor Baker had signed a bill into law on June sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, which has constantly been extended, allowing public bodies to hold remote meetings. Also, pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. And being that we have one member on Zoom this evening, any roll call vote will be done as a roll call vote. So we'll go ahead with what's first on the agenda with the student showcase, and I'll pass this on to our receiver, Mr. Anthony Soto.
Thank you. So we have a couple of students that we wanted to showcase today, both of the Holyoke High Dean Campus. First is Ms. Ruth Ortiz Torres. She wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, but she's here today to receive her certificate of academic excellence on behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. I'm not sure if Al or somebody from the admin team want to come up and say a few words about Ruth?
I don't think so.
Ms. Wilson, can you hear him when he's speaking?
I didn't think so.
You could sit next to Sam and say what you were going to say.
This is better. All right. Hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening and really excited to have a couple of people here tonight that we're going to recognize. First person, obviously, is Ruth Ortiz. Ruth is very, very quiet, doesn't like the spotlight, low-key, but one of the most hard-working students I've met in education almost twenty years. And Ruth is somebody who advocates, so she's quiet, but she will call you out. So she called me to the table this year and wanted to know what was going on at their shop and how we could make it better. But she's really spent the last four years focusing on her academics. Ruth has a four-point-five-six GPA. She's taken all honors classes since freshman year. Ruth has got a big decision coming up. She's already been accepted to three colleges. So full scholar, not full scholarship, but the highest amount of scholarship to Wenick, Elms, and AIC. And I think you're still applying to Westfield State, correct? So Ruth's got a big decision and has worked really hard to get to where she is today. And we're really proud of Ruth, and she has a big showing over here from the Dean Campus, who came here to support her tonight, and we're, yeah, just really proud to have you get this recognition, so.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ruth? Ruth, I do have one question. What is, what are your, what's the major that you're looking to look into?
Medical field, but I want to specify.
Okay, excellent. Are you currently in the health field here? Did I meet you at the talk?
There's a possibility.
Might have happened. All right, well, congratulations. Your parents must be so proud.
Yeah, just again, I want to congratulate you. I went to Dean, and oftentimes Dean is thought of as a place where you just, you know, work right after high school, and I just really appreciate that you focus on your studies and you're actually looking into, you know, you have options and you're going to college. So to all of our Dean students, you know, aim high, and, you know, just because you go to Dean doesn't mean that you can't go to a college. I myself went to Dean and ended up going to a college, so I just really appreciate seeing other examples of that from our Dean Campus. Great job.
And just biasedly speaking, I went to Westfield State, great school, definitely go there. And also, it's okay to be undecided. I was undecided too. But just keep following that path, and it'll be clear on what you're going to want, what you're going to want to do.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank goodness she raised her hand, because I don't have my computer. Ms. Wilson.
That's okay. Thanks, guys. So since Mayor Garcia mentioned something, I have to say Ms. Caraccio and I would be happy that if you go to Elms, because that's where we both went to college. So I had to pump that up. Congratulations and keep up the great work.
Great. Thank you.
Everybody's putting in their two cents, aren't they?
So we have another student showcase from Dean. You want to introduce J.C.?
Sure. And Ruth, I don't know if you have the microphone still, but I don't know if we want to... Right. You can hang on to it. I think you're going to have to get up. You want to get up, yeah. So our next student, this student showcase, and this student, a little over a year ago, I think it was, was on the docket to come to a school committee meeting and present. J.C. Cartagena has started this work a little over a year ago. I was digging through some emails. And, you know, J.C., yeah, I think it was a little over a year ago, where he really tried to boost our media presence in the school. J.C. is in the culinary program. He's a senior. And, you know, last year, he didn't show up to this, and I think I was pretty disappointed. But at the same time, J.C. went on a journey. He started a club at Dean called Hock Media. And, you know, J.C.'s a runner. He makes things happen and asks for forgiveness after. And he's done a bunch of that, and, you know, I have to share the story that I ended up at the casino buying, I think, fifty-five boxes of donuts because J.C. set up a fundraiser without adults being part of it. And, but, you know, he has always meant well, and even got shut down for a little bit because he kind of overstepped. And at that point, you know, I think most students would be like, all right, this might not be for me. But J.C. was not that person. He kind of sat in the background for a while and kind of calculated his next move. And he came forward, and he listened. He collaborated with adults, and he just didn't stop. He didn't stop, to the point of like this year, we reinstated his club. He has an official advisor, Mr. Pedraza, how you doing, Mr. Pedraza, who is now guiding J.C. And J.C.'s really guiding us through moving from old-school announcements over the loudspeaker, and now we're completely live media in all of our home room classes. And, you know, he's engaging a lot of our communities, so we have announcements every day with different folks coming on. And J.C. has like an end game and goal and big plans, but he has learned to take it slow and kind of follow the proper channels to get to where he wants to go and engage the proper people. So we're really proud to have J.C. here tonight. He was going to try to livestream down here, but that would have been a little complicated. But J.C., you want to come on up and say a few words? J.C. Cartagena, Senior. Hock Media.
Hello. Hi, good evening. So. As Chris had said, I am a senior in my culinary arts class. And though I'm in the training field, my main interest is in the communication field. I know this does not have like an active program or curriculum right now. I'm here to talk about the club that I have. This club has been for a very long time. It's like ever since I got, like, I wanted, oh, I wanted. At first, it was going to be like a podcast, but then I was like, I'm trying to engage in visualizing. This year, thanks to our staff here, they push for recording broadcasts and all that. It's not perfect, but it's getting there to the point where, yes, I want a professional communication. Like, I've noticed, like, before, a lot of students were engaged in recording announcements. Like, I hope I could barely hear the announcements we talked about them, and like, said, oh, yeah, we have this tomorrow. I'm like, they, that. But like with the morning announcements on air and having someone like on, like, it gets message delivered. This club is starting. Still have a long way to go. They found equipment. Right now, I think we have some, like, professional cameras. Um, can you hear me now? Sorry. Um, I ask that everyone in this committee can help my club grow. All right. I also, I also want to thank Mr. Gates, like, for dealing with me. I know I'm a, I am a pain to deal with because I like moving fast, which is a good, it's a good thing and a bad thing. I want to thank our, you know, students, especially Yano, because he was the one that kind of like pushed with the livestreaming. And it's their, Pedraza here for always being in the corner. Like, he's always helping me out, like, always giving me, like, new ways to try things. And to Mr. McAliffay for our, again, for lending us our equipment we have now. I don't have anything else to say, but it was a pleasure, like, being able to talk in front of you all. I apologize for being nervous.
No, don't, no apologies. But hold right there. Hold right there, because there might be some questions. Anybody? Ms. Feliciano-Simms?
I just want to know, are you making plans now that you're a senior? Or are you handing it off to somebody? Are you guys making plans as to, so like, again, this is your legacy, right? So I'm just curious. We want to see it. I mean, I love podcasts, and I love, I think streaming is one of the best things, like, right? Like, people, we're all on TikToks and Snap, and so like, that's the connection. So that's awesome. But I just want to know so that you can continue, right?
We, I do have a successor. I still need to show them how, like, everything works. So Jay, DeShonette Torres, she, what's she supposed to be here? But she'll be the one that will take over when I graduate.
Anybody have any questions? Ms. Receiver Colom?
More of a comment. I just want to say, thank you for trying. Even when you saw that there wasn't a major that you could do an actual shop for what you wanted to do, you made it happen anyway within the shop that you were in, right? It's something that is going to impact your school, the community, the way that we do things, and that's going to continue even after you graduate. I think that that really requires a lot of motivation. This is really self-motivation, and I really want to thank you for sharing that with us.
Mr. Collmore?
I'd say congratulate both of you this evening for continuing education. Mr. Soto is not the only one that graduated from being a one to college. I went to college, and I'm so happy that I got here in forty-four more years. And we'll do better things for the city of Ohio. Thank you.
Mr., I'm sorry. It's like I have the words that want to come out, but they won't come out. Superintendent Soto.
What'd you say wrong? You said mister. What's wrong with that?
I was going to say, I was going to say mister, then I'm like receiver, super. I'm like, which way do I go?
Mr. Soto's fine.
Super Soto.
I just wanted, S squared. I just wanted to thank you, J.C., and I wanted to tell everybody, J.C. is a student that models elevating student voice. Like, J.C. is a fierce advocate for, he has my personal email address. I mean, he is probably one of the, he is, he is the student that I have received the most communications from in my last two years. And I just want you to say, like, my door is always open. Please continue to advocate for yourself and for your peers. And, you know, I appreciate that. One of our equity commitments is to, is around elevating student voice. Students have traditionally not been heard in some of the decision-making. But he, you know, he even emailed me at the beginning of the school year, like, what's up with our school supplies? Like, where are they? And got us, like, really moving. I was, you know, last week, we had a bunch of culinary equipment delivered, brand-new culinary equipment. And he's part of the reason why we got it when we did. So just want to commend you. Keep elevating your voice. Keep speaking on behalf of yourself and your peers, and you make good things happen.
And I just want to say, you know, thank you for creating something. But what I would like to see is, how can we continue this and maybe you coming back and continuing it, right? This shouldn't be something where it becomes a club. It should be something, we really have to start looking at the shops that we have and making it more twenty-first century, right? What are the students looking to really aspire to? It's not always the big things. It's, you know, like, I want to be a lawyer. I want to be a doctor. I really thank you. I hope that, you know, when you graduate, you still come back and you continue making it grow, and we're here to support you in that. Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else have any other further comments or questions? Thank you, and to both of you, I wish you all the best in your future.
Thank you very much.
We're going to go ahead and move to public comment. Is there any sign up for public comment or anything submitted?
No, public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. We're going to go ahead and move into communications and reports, and we'll start off with student reports. Mr. Kennedy.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Evan Kennedy. I'm the Dean Campus Student Representative, and I'm in the Health System Program. There are a few updates for today, anyway. On the vocational side of things, State Representative Duffy came in and took a tour of our vocational program. She was toured around by the Dean Campus Student Government, and she is happy to see our students working in their programs. Hours on student life and culture. We're hosting our winter pep rally on December twenty-third. Our elected officials of government will be inaugurated into office. We will also be thanking our all athletes and introducing our, or welcoming our winter athletes, as well as having student-friendly competitions. And of course, students are very much looking forward to their winter break. Any questions?
Those were real quick. Any questions? Nope.
I just have a comment. There is going to be a staff versus student basketball game. So tell your friends to get ready, because I'm going to be in it. All right?
Well, I am a sophomore that will be just seniors, but I will pass along the message.
Pass it along. I'm going to be working out all week to see, to try to, no, I'm just kidding.
Thank you so much. Now we're going to go ahead and move on to superintendent-receiver reports. Mr. Soto.
Great. So I got a, there's a lot in your packet today, but we're only going to be presenting on three of those topics. The first one is around our Q1 step back. So a couple of weeks ago, I had emailed the, the school committee some information around where we're at with quarter one, some trends that we saw and what our next steps are for the second quarter. We want to get in the regular habit of providing this update to the school committee. So today, I'm just going to run through what that process is, because I know that in my letter, I included a lot of attachments. I included a lot of reports. But it was really for you to get a sense of how we provide the quarterly updates to the school committee. The second one is around the middle school schedule. And then the third one is around Yonder, which is a company that, that does the cellphone bags that are being used right now in Springfield and in Chicopee. So we're going to be providing a brief update on that. So first one is the Q1 step back. So if we could go to slide four. I'll just wait for it to get up. There we go. Thank you. Next slide, please. Right there. Thank you. So the purpose of this update is really to educate the school committee on how to do our quarterly reviews throughout the year. That is a very important thing that we do as a leadership team, is make sure that on a quarterly basis, we are taking a look at progress towards the turnaround plan and our strategic plan and annual measures. Obviously, like, there's a lot of data points that aren't available until the end of the year, but there's definitely a lot of things that we look at throughout the year. And a lot of classrooms get visited every single day with the goal of identifying trends and then making sure we're implementing things that support principals and support teachers to move us in the right direction. On a quarterly basis, we sit down with our leadership team. You could move to the next slide. We sit down with our leadership team, our extended leadership team, so that that's every, every person that directly reports to me. But we also include our directors of academics, and we include our directors in people services. Our data team is there. We have an amazing data team now where we, like, I really can't stress enough how, how critical it is to be able to have people that can get you data regularly to help inform important decisions. And they've done a lot of work around being able to provide us with, with regular information. They join. And then we also have some principal representatives that, that meet with us as well as part of this extended team. We look at the Stoplight Reporting Report. So at the beginning of the year, during, during our annual planning, we, we take a look at our priorities that were established in, in both the turnaround plan and strategic plan. And, and each department, they set out like an annual project plan. And quarterly, what we do is we, we take a look at where we're at with each of those projects. So this year, we have seventeen projects, and happy to report that this first quarter was, was really good. We had most of our projects on track, thirteen of them to be exact. And then only one of our projects this year was off track, and that was the one around attendance. So we, you know, we recognize that that one's off track, and we need to make sure we pivot in the second quarter to correct that. We, we have a company called the School Empowerment Network, who does a quality review of their schools. So they come in with their team. They interview the principal. They interview teachers. They walk through the building. They walk through classrooms, and, and they, they then produce a report that you can look at. We've been working with this company for the last three years, so we have three years' worth of data to compare to. That, that report we got in the first quarter, and we were able to review the findings in the first quarter with, at the quarter one retreat. The data dashboard, this is something that is new this year. We've worked with this, a company that, I forgot, Open Architects is the name of the company. They're, they basically were able to look at information from Desi's website. They were able to get into our student information system, into all of the different systems that we use, and create a dashboard that we can look at every single day. We can look at attendance every day. We can look at chronic absenteeism every day. We could look at, we could look at all these different metrics that allow us to really prepare for this, this quarter one retreat. In addition to those, those things that, that I just mentioned, we also have our school improvement plans. Every school designs a school improvement plan every year, and on a quarterly basis, meet with principals, and we, we check in on how their school improvement plan is going, and with a focus more on support. These meetings used to be, used to feel like, you know, I don't, I don't want to say punitive, but they didn't feel supportive. And the feedback that we're getting now is like, wow, this feels a lot different. You guys are actually here to help us and support us. It's not like... It's not like, I gotta prepare this presentation, and then there's no follow-up support. So we went through that school improvement process, where we met with every single principal and their leadership team. And then documented some strengths, some areas of growth. And, and they each identified a problem of practice that they wanted, uh, the district leadership to help dive in and support. And then, and then looked into the second quarter, like, what their, what their goals were for the second quarter. And then the normal stuff, like, we looked at STAR data and, and other data to really prepare for that, for that meeting, uh, for that quarterly retreat. And then on the, on the next slide, like, we're really lifting just two areas of, uh, two things, a primary challenge, two challenges that we identified in, in everything that I just spoke about. One of them being that we need to ensure that students have sufficient time and support to work on grade-level tasks with grade-level text. We recognize, different than last year, what we're seeing now is that teachers are use, actually using the curriculum. They're using the curriculum that, that, that they're expected to be using. But what we're seeing is that some of the tasks that they're asking students to do may not be rigorous, may be overstraffled in. So just as an example, Dr. Mahoney, he might be like, ready to go as a student, and, and the T, but, but I'm not, and I'm struggling, and I need a little bit more support. What we're noticing is that, you know, Dr. Mahoney's not just going. Whatever scaffolds I need, whatever support I need, Dr. Mahoney's also getting, which is leading to, um, really not meeting students where they're at. So that, that was a problem that, that we identified throughout the whole year and all the, all the data that we collected. And then the other, the other obvious one is, is attendance. We have, you know, uh, prior to the pandemic, we were, we were at around 92%. And we've, we've struggled to get back there. And, you know, I say that at a time where, like, you know, illness is going up, and, uh, you know, we've had staff out, we've had students out, like, because of that illness. So, um, it's a challenge, and, and we're not past the pandemic. Ideally, I'd love to be, like, at a, at a place where, you know, kids are coming to school regularly, and we're, we're, but we're not there yet. But, but I also recognize that, you know, um, we need to do something about it, right? So, uh, that's, that's something that we, we dove into with a lot of the, the teams that we met with during the SIP reviews. So what does all this mean, um, in, in terms of the second quarter? In the second quarter, what we're gonna, uh, continue to do is provide coaching supports to principals and their leadership teams, so that they are putting the right tasks in front of students. And then one important thing is just letting them grapple with it. Like, what student, like, allowing a student to grapple with grade-level text is, is important. Like, that's how they persevere through challenges. We often talk about, you know, I've talked about with my own son, how does this relate to actual life? You know, when he's having a difficult time with homework? And I tell him, Bobby, you're gonna deal with problems every single day when you get older. And might not be math-related or ELA-related, but this process of you struggling and trying to learn it and figure it out, it's frustrating. But this is what's gonna prepare you for, uh, challenges ahead. So, uh, we need to allow that time. You can't just keep moving, can't just overscuffled and like, read to kids. We need to allow them to talk to each other and allow them to grapple with it themselves. We're gonna continue to support K to two teachers with, uh, strong implementation of early literacy practices. We really gotta launch this, uh, attendance campaign, which a, after the, the holiday break, we're, we're, we're gonna get materials in front of our schools, like lawn signs and t-shirts and things like that. But even more than that, talk about, uh, work with school-level teams to make sure, uh, we understand what they're doing and so that we can share best practices wherever we see them. Resoning, that, that has, you know, the, the completion of the staff reassignment. We did that on Friday, so all, all staff, uh, got their letters. That's an important piece of the strategic plan. And then the last thing is around inclusion. So we have, uh, I believe six, Dr. Mahoney, six or seven? How many people? Okay. So we have six of our leaders that are, uh, in this Inclusive School Leadership Institute. As, as you know, one of our strategic priorities is to provide more in-classroom supports to our students, so that they get the, the support they need in, in classroom, and they're not being pulled away from core content all the time. We've, we, we identified that as a priority, but we didn't really provide schools with, here's how you do it. Some principals were ready, and they're doing it the way they know how, the way they think they, they, uh, is the right way to do it. But, uh, six of our leaders are going through this, um, Inclusive School Leadership Institute with the idea of like, okay, is this the right training that we could be giving our staff? So that when we bring it back to the, you know, open it up to more, uh, to more of our employees in the district, like our inclusion teachers, our principals. Before we did that, we, we had six people go through it, and we're, we're really close to making a decision that, yes, this is the right, this is the right training to bring back that's really gonna get at that priority. That's it for the Q1 update.
Are there any questions, comments, Ms. Brunel? And can someone, um, make that smaller so that if Ms. Wilson, I can see if she's raising her hand? I can't see. Ms. Brunel?
Thanks. Um, regarding attendance, so I've been seeing a lot on Facebook lately, and I've gotten the letters myself of the letters that we send out to families that, um, whose child had missed some days. And they're very punitive sounding. And so in regards to launching a citywide attendance campaign, I think it's just so much more important, and I know that we are doing this with our phone calls and stuff, but that letter is so unnerving. It's like threatening juvenile court, and truancy officers. And, you know, I don't think that it's the message that parents want to be getting, especially if their kid has missed five days of school because they had COVID or whatever illness they had. So I've just heard a lot of parents lately commenting about how harsh that letter is. And, you know, we want to be celebrating attendance. We want to be encouraging kids to come to school because of all of the benefits of coming to school. So maybe we could refocus that letter to lean towards the benefits of coming to school and not the harsh reality of the punishments that could happen if you don't come to school. And also maybe being more conscious at a district level of who those letters get sent to. Because if it is a medical issue, and that's the reason they're missing school, or, you know, what have you, a lot of times, the building is aware. And so to then send a letter that is, you know, reinforcing the fact that a truancy officer could call you, and you could be held, you know, in juvie for missing school, is just really harsh. So as we go into the new year, and we plan ahead to have this robust, you know, come-to-school-and-be-happy-attendance policy, I just would like us to review the, um, harshness of how we're notifying. I got the letter. And like, you know, you can't even get into the doctor's office some days because there's 37 people in the queue to get an excused absence. But even if the absence is our excuse, they're still adding up. And then we're getting letters like this screaming at us, you know, that our kids are gonna be held in juvie because they missed school. So, you know, we need to be more conscious of that letter that goes out. I think it's really harsh, and, um, I don't know. I think that within the building, within the district, we know a lot about what's going on within the household. So I just think those letters come off, um, come off wrong. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy for any school committee member to help be a part of taking a look at those letters and seeing how we can, um, improve the language. It's not, it's not meant to be threatening. The, the section that you're referring to says like, you know, once you hit a certain amount of days, we want to make sure that we can support you to get your children to school, which, which could include, you know, referrals and LACE and things like that. It's meant to be more supportive than it is meant to be punitive. But if, if that's not how it's landing with you as a parent, then we need to look at that. But really, it, it is meant to be supportive. And, and respectfully, like, some of our kids need that. Some of our students are, are benefit from those supports. Put it that way. Really, really benefit from, from the support of, of someone doing a house visit. Or, and LACE has a family resource center, um, really stepping in to, to work with the family to say, hey, what's going on here? How can we? So, you know, I, I, I hear your point. I'd, I'd love for anyone on the committee to, to, to be a part of, of, um, of taking a look at that language and, and still understanding that there are, those supports are in place, because they're necessary for some families.
Ms. Wilson, I'm gonna give you that look.
I can't see you.
Because I know you had your hand raised. You're like, but I so
I knew a long time ago. Go right ahead.
So, um, first of all, I'd love to help with that letter. I, I think, you know, absolutely, I'd love to help with that. So, uh, Mr. Soto, we can figure out a time where we can, I'd be happy to help out with that. But one thing I wanted to say, um, was that, you know, with that scaffolding instruction, I think, you know, your point is really quite, um, accurate. I think sometimes as teachers, we want to support our students so much that we miss out on them. You know, we overscuffle things so they don't have that struggle, because we don't like seeing them struggle. But as you said, it is critical in the learning process, not just for their education, but for life. So I know it's, it's a hard thing, and I know it's something that teachers strive for, you know, finding that sweet spot. And making sure, like, not to, as you said, do the same thing for every student. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're looking at that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Tiberacolum?
I would also be happy to look over that and also have the conversation about how is it that we can turn that information into something really useful? Like, this is the average of how many successful students were at school, right? This is how we're faring there. How is it that we can provide resources for you to be able to actually gain back that knowledge, everything that you may miss? Rather than talking about the things that could go wrong, what are the things that we have available for you to support you? Because sometimes, one of the things that I have seen is that people don't, parents may not know how much is too much in terms of days missed, right? Because they might think, like, oh, this was only a few days here and there, but how does that add up? And sometimes even a little graphic that shows you that is like, wait a minute, I didn't even think about it that way. I didn't think it was so impactful. And these are things that are not necessarily hard to do, but it would be a nice way of being able to convey the message in a way that's supportive.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Colmore?
Just a question. During the survey that are going around, are any sections of the city that are more viable to this guy?
Some schools have better attendance, um, than others. But I would say what's, what's more prevalent is the, when you disaggregate the data by grade. Like, in middle and high school specifically, attendance seems, seems to drop off. So one thing that I, I thought Dr. Mahoney did a really good job of is we do have one attendance officer in the district, Guy Edgar Robles, he does great work. But, um, but one thing that he pivoted this year on was, Dr. Mahoney said, look, you are not spending any time, any other school, these are the three schools that you're gonna spend time on based on the data that we're looking at. Recognizing that there's one of him, right? And wants to go and, and get out to all 11, 13 schools. But there's some schools that are, are doing a little better and may not need as much of the support. And so Yari, let's comment. Our attendance campaign, I don't know if you remember, but Stephanie Garcia came and Josara Burgos came at an earlier meeting, I think it was in August. The attendance campaign itself at the district level is all about twisting, like, changing that and putting a positive spin. So part of the materials that we're gonna be getting is, is really about that. Like, t-shirts that say, you know, if your child shows up every day, they're this much more likely to graduate, you know? Just, uh, really putting a positive spin. But I do recognize we've got some letters that we've been using for many years, and, and that maybe it gets time that we need to, we take a look at that and see if, if we can align in what the intent of those letters are to our desire to, to really have a positive outlook on attendance.
Any other questions or comments? So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna kind of be real on this. No, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't be you.
No, it wouldn't be me, would it? So here comes Ms. Brunel talking about this letter, because Ms. Brunel got it. But yet, it's a letter that has been sent to families, especially the Latino families, for many years. And I'm gonna speak on it, because it's from when this whole thing about LACE now collaborating with the Holyoke Public Schools to be like, the center to send the families to before they get referred to DCF. Or, or what was the old-time name of a chins, which is a child in need of service. Now, we're gonna call it this famous other word, which I can't even remember, because chins is a chins. I don't care if you, whatever you label you put on it, it's still a chins. The kid has to go to court. They don't follow the rules, guess where they land? They definitely ain't landing, you know, staying at home, enjoying life. They're gonna be going somewhere else. And then it goes against the parent. How many of you know how long, when there's a DCF referral, how long that affects your record? Does anybody know? Ms. Feliceano Sims, do you know? How many years? 75 years. Remember that. Because for every family that you file on, that, and then it's unfounded, it's 75 years. So how does that impact that family? That family, if somebody else in their family, something happens, the kids that they have will never be able to go with that family, even if they're a good family, because they had a referral or they were investigated for DCF. Okay? And how does Mildred know this? My 75 years ain't up yet. Okay? So for 75 years, and I'll probably be dead by then, and this is because the school felt that it was gonna be, how would I put it? It's going to help you. Help get services for your child. When it was DMH who was gonna provide me those services, not DCF. So here you come, right? Concerned about this letter, but this letter has been going around for a long time. So how do we change that? Because let's look at who's getting the letters. Ms. Brunel got it this time. But who got the most of them? Right, those are the families. So we have to look at better programs, because a lot of times, we also don't look at the fact that, what constitutes the absence? Is it always that the kid doesn't go because they were sick or whatever? No, it could be a suspension. Suspension isn't, is an absence, correct? So if they got suspended three times, let's say it's three days, right there, there's nine. Now they were sick or they got injured. We don't look at that. We don't say, well, we're the ones who told him to stay home nine days. You know? Or when we're asked not to bring them to school the next day. Let them have a cooling-off day. Right? Or if you send them to school, and then you call us 10 minutes later to go pick them up, that's not absence, you know? So let's be a little bit real about that. Let's, please, let's find different ways to really connect with these families. Okay? Help them, because let me tell you, sometimes the reason why kids aren't going, there's a reason. We gotta find that reason out. And if they're constantly complaining of a stomach ache, what's going on? That's probably anxiety. Something's happening, so how do we support that child? And then the parents are just frustrated. You know, sometimes we put our hands up, I can't anymore. You know what, whatever, stay home, right? It's for our sanity, because we, we're dealing with, with the stressors. The kids try to hold it together in school. um, because they're trying so hard not, not to make themselves out there and, and known that, oh, there's a kid again. Instead, they bring that frustration back home and then they take it out on the ones where they feel safe at. And so the families, when the kid is going off, they're like, you know, okay, don't even go. He's sick. Keep him home. Ma calma, right? More calm. You know, so it's, I don't know, we just need to, to figure it out a whole lot better. Um, because if you're looking at the school to prison pipeline, that's still continuing, hasn't erased yet. And so, um, we have not just Holyoke, but plenty of urban school districts um, really need to start working together and campaigning together at looking at ways to keep kids engaged, keeping them in school and finding the supports. And the teachers already do go above and beyond. So it's, how do we connect a lot with community partners in positive ways? Not in ways that are, um, partnerships where it could end up going in the negative way. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Ms. Rivera Colom.
And I just wanna add, and how to provide those, have the people meet each other and everything before is an actual issue, before is a problem. Here are the supports that we have for all the families. Before is actually already going into something that could be negative. If this, these are the people who are available to you as resources.
I pass it back to you. Dang, changed. Ms. Wilson, you had your hand up?
No, I forgot to take it down to the last one. Sorry.
No problem.
My bad.
Um, are we going to the next section? Um, so the, the next section of the agenda is, uh, just providing an update on the middle school schedule work that we have. Um, where we're at in the process. I'm gonna ask Dr. Mahoney to come up to the, one of the microphones. Um, but on the next slide, you can see that, uh, we did have the, the middle school collaborative study teamwork. They've come here, they've come here, uh, last year to the school committee to provide an update. And one of the things the middle school collaborative study team did was, uh, provide input on what they'd like to see in a schedule. Um, and this, this slide really, uh, uh, they wanna, it really just summarizes one of the key takeaways from the middle school collaborative study. Um, you know, with, uh, making sure that there's enough time for strong core instruction, um, including social studies. Uh, making sure that there's enough time in the schedule for staff to collaborate and enough time for, uh, in the schedule for, uh, intervention or acceleration. I like the, the word acceleration, uh, better than, than intervention. Another thing we heard from that collaborative study was exposure to multiple enrichment courses. So not, you know, not having to choose between, um, art or music and PE, but like students in the middle school ages being able to get exposed to more than just two or, or three specials. Um, and then the, the last big takeaway was around advisory and SEO, making sure that there's enough time in the schedule for that, for our middle school. Um, the next slide really is a, a draft of, of what we've, we, we, we engaged a consultant to take a look at the middle school collaborative study, um, ERS. And, and they came in and took a look at that and helped us develop the schedule that you see in front of you. And I'm just gonna have Dr. Mahoney speak to it.
Great. Thank you, Anthony. Um, so ERS did come in and work with, uh, we had a working group of, uh, twelve uh, folks from, uh, across the district. Uh, we had, uh, our, our, uh, arts department chair. We had a, a, a multi-language, multi-language learner teacher. We had special education teacher. We had a core teacher from the middle school. We had someone from the high school to help with that. Um, we had a counselor there, a couple of principals. Um, and what I like to, the one constraint that we put on ourselves for the, for the schedule is that the, the curriculum that we have for English and for, uh, math, uh, springboard and, um, uh, I am illustrative math are such that we really need to have class periods that get as close to sixty minutes to a, a full hour as possible um, so that the, the, the full lesson curriculum can be delivered um, and kids can have a chance to get to it through it and beyond it. With that said, um, we landed on a, on a curriculum, on a schedule that gives you English and math meeting every single day. Kids carry seven, a seven-class schedule. They'll have, uh, English and math every day. The other five classes, they will drop one of those five classes one day a week. So Spanish Language Arts will meet four times a week. Science will meet four times a week. Social Studies will meet four times a week. And then the enrichments that we land on, whether that's PE or music or the visual arts, they will meet four times a week each. We also, um, we landed on the seven, uh, 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 class schedule uh, and this drop schedule because, um, we heard loud and clear from families and from students that they wanted middle school to be fun again. Um, and fun again meant having enrichment classes that really spoke to what kids were passionate about and the things that they love to do and that provide an opportunity for social, emotional learning as well as, um, for capitalizing on what kids, the strengths the kids bring, uh, into our schools. So we, we had this, 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 a bit of a, the reason why we landed on this hybrid drop schedule is the, the best metaphor I can give is that, um, we had a fourteen-ounce glass and we had a seventeen-ounce soda or whatever, a glass of water that we were trying to pour in it. And so, um, while the dropping of the classes is not ideal, um, for us, um, the, the team, uh, which included our, um, folks from dual language and folks from mono language, uh, middle schools and, and programming, felt that this was the way to get, um, at the most good, uh, that, that we could have. Um, and, uh, this also gets, you'll see that one of the enrichment classes meets the same time every day. Um, that's when the teachers would have collaborative time. Um, all the teachers on that grade level team would be able to sit down and talk about curriculum, coordinate events, talk about families. To what Ms. LaFavor's saying, get at, what's the story behind students who are, are struggling to attend, uh, on time all the time? Um, I'll stop talking there and see if folks have some, some questions about this.
I know I have Ms. Brunel. After Ms. Brunel, Mr. Wallahan.
So the first thing I don't like about this, when we're talking about strong core instruction, because we're once again looking at enrichments and specials. And we've talked, I feel like all fall about the fact that we're going to be looking at those as core classes now in our new model and our new curriculum when we restructure everything that, you know, it's not supposed to be looked as a special now. It's supposed to be looked at as part of the day, right? And so to say enrichment, it's not being looked at as part of the day. And, I mean, I can't, as a dual-language parent, I don't like them not having SLA every day. And then math and English every day, but not science every day. And then the lunch is just not long enough. Like, we focus so much on the social, emotional health of our kids, like, they need lunch. They need the time to decompress, to socialize, to eat. I mean, they have three hours of a long day, science, math, and English, and then only a half an hour for lunch. And then what happens if you're not in Spanish Language Arts? You get a second special, but if you're in dual language, you don't get a second special? That doesn't seem, um, very equitable to me. And then what if you don't need intervention? What happens during the last period of the day? What do you do? I'm asking questions.
Right, I know, I'm sorry. I don't want to cut you off, so.
No, but I just, I, this is like very, I don't know, upsetting kind of me as a middle school parent. I don't understand how we're still calling, like, gym an enrichment? And what else are we gonna offer for enrichment? Where's room for band and music and art? I thought we were gonna make it a core program.
Right.
Do you have a suggestion on what we call them? Because I, I mean, I'd be happy to change what we label them.
Well, I just know that, like, in the middle school group that we formed to study middle schools and I feel like as a district, we've been consistently talking about that these are no longer to be looked at as special. That they're to be looked at as part of the core of a child. Music is part of the core of a person.
What I would say.
Art is part of the core of a person. So enrichment is, to me, like, I get to go, like, you know, do something that is not part of my core of an education as a person. Like, I just feel we, I understand math and, and English and the fact that we're trying to test these kids in math and English. But like, the more we hyper-overfocus on just these two categories, the worse we're doing as a district. Like, I can't be the only one that sees this, right? So, you learn math in other classes, you learn English in other classes. So why are we not drap, dropping math and English if it's truly trying to be equitable? And what are the enrichments going to look like? And again, what is the ELA, the, the Spanish Language Arts student missing out on by having Spanish Language Arts instead of an extra enrichment?
Right, so, um, I'll, I'll try to get at some of your questions. And, and you've raised questions that were very much at the heart of our conversations, which is making choices about how we spend time during the school day. Um, and again, I, I wanna say that part of the, the drop piece was being committed to sixty-minute blocks of time so that teachers have an opportunity to launch a lesson, that kids are able to actually do what it is that, that you, you wanna do and then to close the lesson. And that's whether it's a, whether it's an art class or whether it's a science class, or whether it's a math class. Um, it, uh, otherwise, if we were looking at, we looked at seven periods, seven periods left us with about forty-eight minutes per class. And anyone who's running a middle school, a middle school classes knows that that turns into about forty-four, you know, forty-three to forty-five minutes of actual instruction once kids get in and get settled. And in that actual instruction, it's time for transitioning out. So it's a very short ti, period of time, which is why unanimously, everyone on that team is like, we, we need to find a way to get longer, uh, longer class periods. That the students who, um, the students who are not in need of intervention, um, as, as Anthony said, like, right now, the naming here is, it's an intervention acceleration block. Um, so those students who aren't in need of intervention will have an opportunity to accelerate where, you know, where they are now. So that could be anything from, you know, giving, uh, uh, giving seventh and eighth graders who are reading a couple of grade levels ahead of themselves an opportunity to really engage with books that meet their reading level as opposed to, you know, right now, we, in, in springboard, we're really aiming at, at grade level, uh, instruction. Or for students who are ready for accelerated math, to have accelerated math. Take the first, a part of our Algebra I or maybe the entire Algebra I course as eighth graders.
And you're looking, there's this intervention block to basically give the more ELA and math work, even if they're accelerated.
And, so, uh, what I would tell you is that we have very few, if you look at our data, the, the harsh reality of our data is that we have very few students who are above grade level when they sit for standardized tests. And, and so that's the reality that we have right now in the district. So when we're planning a schedule, we're planning a schedule for the overwhelming majority of students. And when you look at our grade three, eight MCAS results, they're in the teens or single digits for math and ELA. And so that, that's, that's why in, in intervention acceleration block is critical to the middle school schedule. I would say that this.
So hold on a second, Ms. Mahoney. You just referenced third grade MCAS, but then to an intervention block in middle.
I said third through eighth grade. So I could tell you sixth through eighth grade, the data's no different. It's a little better, seventh grade, but it's, it's, the, the trend is teens and single digits for achievement in, in mathematics in ELA. The, the, if you look at this schedule, there's eight, eight sections for either band or PE or visual arts. We have, uh, we, the, we have feedback from families around what they would like for enrichment courses. Um, we intend to meet tomorrow with, uh, the middle school principals for next year. And tomorrow, we're going to be thinking through, how do we engage students and families' voice in determining what the electives, what the enrichment classes are that we're going to offer? We know we want to offer music. We know we want to offer visual arts. We know we have to offer physical education. What the other classes and, uh, are and courses are is, is a matter of really determining what's gonna drive students, what's gonna pull students to school, as well as, um, what we, what we'll be able to hire for. Um, you know, what, what the, what the landscape is for kinds of teachers that are coming out of, uh, education schools now. The, um, you know, when, when we look at the, the science and the social studies, uh, and the SLA, um, uh, you know, currently, in the past few years, science and social studies have either been, uh, once, you know, one semester for science and one semester for social studies at forty-five minutes a block. Um, you know, we're, we, you know, we have a crisis in STEM education. Um, and if we, you know, and so, um, so we had to make, so we, we made, we made those decisions. And I, I absolutely understand that the tensions that you're lifting up in terms of that schedule. But oftentimes, when you're trying to make a schedule that gets at multiple goods, there's going to be some satisficing that has to happen, uh, in the course of it.
And I know this isn't finalized yet, but again, so let's say I'm a student at Sullivan and I'm not in the Spanish, the dual language. I get two enrichment classes, but dual-language kids only get one.
Correct.
That's not really equitable.
Well, I.
And then on the day that they don't have Spanish Language Arts, the only Spanish they're getting is science class? They get way more than that now in the dual-language school.
Right.
So we're keeping dual language, but yet one day a week, they're only gonna have one class in Spanish. That's not enough. There's no way that we can feel that that's gonna be enough and still setting them up for the right track to be. This, this is not acceptable as a language parent and as a student. Remember, like, this has to, we gotta figure this out. It's not, it's not equitable. One of the reasons we went to the dual language being, you know, a part of a regular middle school was to try to make things equitable. So, it's not really, I don't, I hate the word fair. I feel like that's such a lame word. But one student gets to have band and, I don't know, visual arts or something awesome. And because the other student is in Spanish, they get an extra, like, hardcore class.
But I'll, I'll also say that some students will probably choose world language as one of their, um, some students aren't getting any of that, right? So, but one of the things that we heard from students is, as a, when we interviewed, and I, I don't know what the right word to use for enrichment courses, but world language was up there for, for a lot of our students. So, um, there's some students that want that as, as one of their, one of their specials. And the, the, the other thing, um, that we'll mention is it looks like it's only two, but really, what, what Dr. Mahoney was trying to say, or in this schedule, um, we'll have, we'll definitely have more. So one of the things is, that, one of the things we want to get feedback from students and families on is how that schedule works. So, I'll give you an example, like, uh, for my son, for example, he has four specials and he has those four specials all year long. Has art, music, and, uh, technology, all technology. But there's, there's other ways to do it, like picking, um, which, you know, having only two of those, but having them for the first quarter or for, uh, one quarter and then you wrote for the other two in the second quarter. We've, we've talked about doing it by grade too. So like, uh, sixth graders, for example, uh, being exposed to the four all year, but then when they get into seventh or eighth grade, being able to like focus. We know we can't get out of offering PE, it's, it's required. Um, so all students will still have to take that. But those are some iterations of the schedule that we haven't flushed out yet. We want to get feedback on that.
Yeah, it's very, it's very.
I just feel like we focus so much, and so much of the work we've done over the last year or two about really enforcing that things like music are core, right? And I don't see that in, in this. And I don't see that in, in this, in this schedule. Hopefully in our new elementary school schedules, we're going to see music being part of our core every single day instruction, because like, like I said, we keep focusing on like these two like main instructional courses. But like, you have a whole person that needs it.
Yeah.
And if we do a better job at educating that full person, they're going to be better math students and better English students, right?
Well, I-
And they're not going to be bored at school and like, that's a heavy morning. That's a real heavy morning.
This is, this is a sample student schedule. Not every student's schedule is going to look like this. And I would just say that, that eight enrichment classes a week is more than our middle school students get now.
Right. Part of why we're districting our schools to come up with better schedules.
Right, but I, my point is that, you know, that-
But my point is just because it's better than what they get now does not make it right. I think you and I both agree on that. Our, we're always trying to do better, of course, but we're, but can't sit here and say as a district that we're going to, you know, implement these for instruct, you know, educating the whole child. And I know when we had the middle school study team and we came up with all the different things we want to see in middle school. I know darn well, there was multiple, multiple people within that committee that overemphasized the fact that these are not special. They're not enrichment. They're part of who you are through your core. Theater, music, art, right? They're part of who makes you who you are. So, and even within our, our English courses, like our kids aren't really reading like, you know, literature. So I just, I just would love it as a district, if we say like, we're going to retalk about our language, we're going to refocus and this is something that's going to be important to us that we continue consistent with what we're messaging. Cause this looks like to me like, oh, I get to pick some, some elective, right? So I just want to go back to that messaging that these things are not enrichment. They're core to who you become as a student and as a person.
Call them essentials.
I, I mean, if it's a, it, you're, you're right. I mean, yeah, the, the language is, I, I, you know, I want to just call it what it is, which is, you know, arts, movement and fitness. But, but we, like, there's, there's something else there, but I, I, so I'm agree with you, like enrichment's like, when the student gets your schedule, it's not going to say enrichment. It's going to say art. It's going to say band. It's going to say dance. It's going to say theater. And they're going to see that they're going to have it for, you know, eight percent of the week. Uh, so.
I don't think it's right to have SLA.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Mr. Wellhand?
Thank you. Um, just to kind of follow up on what Mrs. Brunel was saying, um, like Spanish, like languages, where does that fit in here under what category?
So again, we, we are going to be pulling together, uh, students and families and, and staff to determine what final offerings are going to be. Spanish language arts would be one of those two, could be one of those two classes. The only thing we know we have to, uh, provide, uh, is, uh, physical education.
Yeah.
The state requires that, that, that course, um, is required every year. Um, whether it's a quarter, a semester or a full year is really local discretion, but it, it has to be a required course.
Mm-hmm.
And just a second question, um, intervention, is that voluntary? Is that recommended?
No, that'll, that, that will be-
How do you get to that, that spot?
That'll be, students will be scheduled for that. So that, that won't be a voluntary, uh, piece. Um, and, uh, that'll be an opportunity for, uh, grade level teams to break into even smaller sections and give kids really personalized support around things that they're struggling with. It'll also be, that same group of students will be where we'll also, they'll be traveling with that same teacher. That's where they'll do their social, emotional learning and advisory work as well. So it's not all getting at, um, you know, skill building and, and, and academic fluency. Uh, it's also going to be where we're going to deliver our trails curriculum and such.
Um, when I was in high school back in the eighties, um, some of the teachers had, um, offered special help, like, you know, they set aside, you know, Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon for an hour for anyone that again wants to come back, uh, review some, some items. So I'm not sure if that's what happens or not.
Um, currently that happens at the high schools, on the high school campuses. Uh, not so much on the middle school campuses, although teachers stay after school and there are always kids there. But it's not a formal part and large part, uh, that's a transportation issue as much as anything else. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wellhand. Um, Ms. Wilson?
Hi. Um, so thanks for this information. Um, you know, I, I, I'm listening to, you know, Ms. Brunel, um, you know, speak with her passion. Um, you know, and I, and I, and I'm, I'll be honest, I'm trying to think back, like, you know, how did I fit in? You know, band? How did I fit in chorus, um, into my high school years when? And we all, and I still had that, I guess what we would call enrichment, where you picked what you wanted. It was like for us back in the day, it was, like, there was, uh, home economics, there was woodworking, there was, you know, there was art to choose from. All of those pieces were those, um, you know, and I'm, for the lack of a better term, which they really are, they're special to the day because they, they do enrich us as individuals. Um, because not everyone wants the same type of enrichment. Um, you know, so I, I sit there and I think about it, you know, myself and, you know, I, I think my biggest piece is, you know, I understand the thirty minute lunch, but I'm wondering, like even bef- I'm wondering if we can break it down where these even just a little bit of extra time, even in, in the afternoon, you know, mornings typically kids move through quickly. After lunch, we all know it's, it's challenging to get a student back on track after lunch. Um, you know, right away to their academics. But I'm wondering if, you know, we could have like some just like, you know, even just, you know, ten, fifteen minutes if we could figure it in, just a little bit more break in the afternoon, just to have a little more, you know, socialization time. So, you know, um, and while I'll say that having four sciences a week is better than what we do now, I, I'm still in favor of having science five days a week. Because if we want to believe in STEM, if we're saying that we believe in it, then we should be having that as well as English and math, you know, five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Does anybody, does anybody else have any further comments, questions? Ms., Ms. Brunel?
Um, just curious, when is this potential, let's say whenever you guys decide on a potential finalized schedule, will there be a middle school parents meeting where they'll get to have some say or some feedback on what this ends up looking like?
There's, I mean, we're gonna, we're, we're looking at serving, reserving our students and, uh, around, around the enrichment offering. Whether they want, uh, four or five all year long, or if they want a quarter, six, seven, eight, quarter. Um, but, you know, i- if, if, I think that what you're bringing to our attention is that we should also incorporate some sort of, uh, you know, I don't know if feedback, right, right, bring to, by other families too. Or, um, if you have other suggestions, we're, we're definitely open.
I mean, it's such a hard thing, right? Cause at the end of the day, work has to be done by those that know. But like, I, I just have a hard time looking at this and thinking that the principals of these buildings and the educators all think that this is the best potential schedule that we- Uh, like I could even just see like Spanish class is the last class on a Friday after enrichment. That's, that, that class is going to be a nightmare, right? Like I'm just looking at this like, oh boy. So I would like to stay more involved with this as it moves forward, uh, just to, you know, have an idea.
Yeah.
Especially for the dual language, like there's a lot, a lot of change happening within the district, obviously. Um, not just dual language students, all students. So, you know, this redistricting to a middle school, we want to come up with a schedule that's going to work for the next few years, not that has to be completely rearranged the following year. Um, because it didn't work, you know? So I just would like to-
Yeah, we're happy to set up a, you know, set up a time for that to happen. And, um, I think Laura, Laura Espinoza-Mopson should be there. Um, she's, uh, she's, uh, one of our associate directors for dual language. Um, she's been heavily involved in thinking about the dual language schedule itself. Uh, looking at what framing has, looking at what other dual language, what best practices for dual language. She had a lot of input, um, into like, um, you know, the, the schedule that we have and how is that. So I think it's a good idea to, um, to connect with you and, and then if, um, once we connect, we, we got, we got to roll out a plan for how we're going to get feedback.
I mean, I don't know if you're looking at teacher voices too, but, um, the current Spanish teacher for seventh and eighth at MCAS has been in the programs since fifth grade. You know, she teaches the SLA, so to hear like, with only four days a week, are they going to be on grade level? Like, what are her opinions on how much Spanish that they're going to get versus what they're getting now? And where they're going to end up, right? Cause now they're going to get tested to go into high school to see what class they might get in because we don't know what we're offering yet for that either. So we don't want, it's just, you know, it's been such a focus of the programming in the district. We need to make sure that we keep it a focus. I just don't know if missing one day of SLA is something that's going to set them back. I don't know. I'm not the educator.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the yonder phone bags update.
Great. Um, and this one, I'm just going to ask Dr. Mahoney to take it away. Um, I'm just struggling over here. Sorry.
Okay, um, so as many of you may be aware, um, several, uh, several schools, uh, around the area have, um, pivoted using these, uh, this, uh, cell phone technology. Um, the, uh, the technology is that it's essentially, it's a soft bag, steel preen bag that locks that students hang on to. They keep it the whole day. So there's no taking a phone away from students. Uh, when locked in the bag, the phone, uh, is, uh, accessible. Leave a call, you can't send a call. Um, it won't ring, it won't buzz. Um, uh, at the end of the day, um, on the, on the right side of this graphic, uh, you'll see that there's a, a table mounted, um, or it could be wall mounted, but every school we've visited, it's table mounted demagnetizer. Students will go by, they tap their bag, um, on the demagnetizer, it opens up. They have their phone. They keep their bag. So they bring the bag to and from school. Um, and, uh, we have been, uh, we, we have visited, uh, Central High School, uh, Chickaby High School. Uh, we're going to Kennedy Middle School in, in, uh, Springfield, uh, the week we're back from, uh, vacation to get a sense of what kind of impact it's just having, uh, on, uh, on the culture of the school, uh, and on the learning on that's happening. Um, it's tough to say the learning, you know, what the impact on the learning is, that, that's, uh, kind of uh, subjective and, and anecdotal at this point. Um, but, um, teachers and administrators at both Central and Chickaby High School, where I've visited and where, uh, some folks, uh, visited, uh, earlier last week, uh, just report that there's a very high, you know, uh, compliance rates, the high eighties, uh, low nineties uh, of students comply and, um, the, the, the back and forth and the tussle uh, between students and adults about appropriate use of, of phones in and out of, outside the classroom. It's just not present. Um, and you walk into classrooms and you don't see kids on their, on their phones. And when classes are in, in transition, kids are walking down the hallway with their heads up instead of, um, looking on phones. Um, and administrators at both high schools, uh, report, uh, considerable less kind of, uh, drama surrounding uh, phones and, and social media posts and, and, and that kind of thing that, that can start mess, um, at schools. Um, we've been looking, we were looking at, um, at this for, uh, uh, area schools are learning lessons. We want to learn lessons. Phones are a problem in, in our schools, in our middle and our high schools. They are a problem. Um, the, um, and so, um, you know, uh, the science is really real. Like phones are designed to be addictive. Um, and they're designed especially for developing brains that are super susceptible to the dopamine um, that comes from the quick, she liked my post. They like, ba da, da da, da da, da da, meet me at the bathroom, ba ba, all that. Um, and, um, and we know that the impacts that they can have, uh, on kids and on their healthy social emotional development. Ran this through, uh, principals and, 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 and their leadership teams. And two of our middle schools, um, are super eager to, uh, try and pilot, um, uh, these bags, uh, this, uh, this year. Um, that's STEM here in the, in the Dean Building, Holyoke Middle School. So, um, we, uh, we're building a, a timeline. Uh, this is not something that you just do when we come back from, from vacation. We're building a timeline, uh, of how to break this, uh, work this, uh, get student voice involved in it, get family voice involved in it, hear concerns. Make sure that we're coordinated, you know, we've, we've had, uh, several, uh, conversations with the Holyoke Police Department. Police departments in Springfield and Chickaby and Greenfield all report they would rather, um, not having hundreds of phones, getting nine-one-one when, when there is an emergency in the building. Um, so they are there behind. That, I think is probably one of the number one concerns. Um, with, uh, uh, for families is, is, you know, phones is a link to safety. Um, but the police departments are pretty four square, uh, behind the bags. Um, and so, um, we wanted to bring it to, to you all to, you know, we do have two middle schools that sometime this late winter, early spring, we'll be, uh, looking to pilot this for the year, for the rest of the year. So we can learn and then decide whether or not we want to, uh, we want to implement this, um, throughout the district at either the six, eight level, six, twelve level.
The only other, the only other thing that I'll, um-
Next slide, Mike?
I'll add is that, uh, I did bring this to our teacher advisory group. Um, and overwhelmingly like all the teachers really thought that this was, um, something that we should potentially move forward with. I also brought it to our high school cabinet. Uh, I, I meet with a group of students regularly, um, to get input from students before we make decisions. And I was actually surprised. Um, it's not a ton of students. Probably had like ten students, but I would say two of them were like, I think we should have the choice. And the rest of them were like, I think this is a good idea. Um, I myself as a student feel like, you know, phones have been distracting and, uh, you know, so I was, I was pleasantly surprised from hearing from students that they thought this was something that would be helpful, especially for, for middle schoolers and high schoolers. So, um, I myself, before we looked into this, we, you know, there were a lot of people that, you know, when we see a fight on social media, when we see, like, I, I've heard from so many parents, like, we should be taking away the phone, blah, blah, blah. It was a lot of buzz around that because Chickaby was doing it. We made a conscious decision to say like, look, let's take a look at, you know, Chickaby's doing it, Springfield is doing it. Or we just rush to see if there, if this would, would be something that would help. Let's let them go through that process and let's learn from them. And we committed to that. We, we've been in Chickaby, we've been in Springfield. And the feedback that we're getting from the leaders in that school, um, and the staff in that school, uh, is overwhelming in terms of how supportive this was to be, uh, to get students, uh, a little bit more engaged and to minimize some of the disruptions that we see like in the hallways. Sometimes you see, you know, uh, get a text from your friend, you're in the bathroom, hey, I'm in the bathroom, come. Uh, it says that they've, they've minimized some of those. It's not perfect. It's not the end all be all. It's not going to be, you know, uh, but, but we will monitor it closely and we're just interested to hear from the school committee, um, what their thoughts are on this.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Collmore?
The, the time limit on effective in the schools is on, uh,
Oh, we can't uh so it they'll be they'll be locked when you walk into school. And then when before you leave school, they'll be unlocked, we're not gonna keep those, but the phone will be on the student's person. Um and in the event, if if for whatever reason, like. A student, you know, I'll just use an example, like doesn't get unlocked. Like the pouches are easily cut, you can cut them with with a pair of scissors. Not to say everybody's walking around with scissors, but that was a concern of mine, like, what if I need it now and I can't? You know, uh A, the the teachers, most of our teachers have cell phones. The event of an emergency and B, like like Dr. Mahoney mentioned. The the police feedback from us was like the the worst thing that you could have in a real life emergency is. Five hundred kids trying to call their parents and clouding and clogging the the cell towers, which would. Uh actually be a a bad thing if if uh law enforcement or or ambulance or fire were ever in need. To to communicate with the school. So um we've, you know, we're we're very much interested in in piloting this at at two of our middle schools that are. Uh two of our middle schools that are ready and then uh learning from it and deciding if this is worthwhile moving forward at uh. Next year at a larger scale like the high school.
Ms. Brunels and Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you, um a couple of things. You mentioned the eighty-five to ninety percent participation rate, so I guess we would have to decide like what are their potential consequence, right? Because we don't want over abundant of a consequence because someone forgot their pouch. Um and then obviously, we'd have to figure out like what's a new pouch cost if you didn't bring it or whatever. Um but just thinking of like, I'm glad that you said they're cuttable, because I was just thinking like, where would those unlock stations be mounted? Um you know, would do would a kid like run to the principal's office if, you know, they absolutely needed to call. Well, I mean, the principal's office has a phone, so I'm I'm all for no phones at all, but that's really hard to enforce, but. You know, in case of emergency, if you are hunkered down in a classroom because God forbid, there is a real true emergency. It's good to know that they could cut them to access them because that is gonna be probably one of the feedbacks we get is like, well, what if my kid needs to reach me? Because there's a shooter in the building or something like that, so I like that they can be cut. Um I had a different point, but I forgot it, so we'll just leave it there.
Yeah, um part of the part of the contract, um uh they will, they will send you replacement bags. Uh as uh so you pay a a flat fee per student. Um the first year that includes technical support and then the second year it's it drops um because they're just providing bags. Um and they'll ship the bags out, they generally come within a week's time.
I remembered my other point, um I remember when Chickaby was piloting this last year, my niece was a senior. She said sometimes in class, the teacher will be like, you know, get out your phones because the internet or whatever, so. If this is something we do end up implementing, just, you know, obviously ensuring that we have the adequate um networking at the school so that the. You know, the kids can all be online doing something and not need to use a phone as a hotspot. Because I did hear that that was sometimes happening.
Yeah, um the other point I wanted to make is that one of the, we have some. Our middle school principals are also gonna be visiting some of these schools that are doing it. Um and some students on our high school cabinet. While they wanna go, they said, I don't want, I don't wanna hear from just adults, I wanna talk to the students in those schools, so. We're gonna, we're gonna provide that opportunity as well for um the students that were on our cabinet that asked to to go. Visit these schools that are already doing it, to be able to do that with 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 our team.
Ms. Wilson, can you just put yourself on mute, please? I I keep hearing you, sorry. Mr. Wellahan, then Ms. Wilson, then Ms. Rivera Colon.
Thank you, yeah, um I do that, um Chickaby had this program and it was uh successful, so. I was hoping that we were gonna do something, something similar, you know, um like I said, these. The uh the phones are uh addictive, you know, to the children, I know, I know plenty adults that they're addicted to too.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I can, uh maybe Sam can share with you an article that was written that draws a parallel between the smoking areas. That were in in play when you and I were in high school, uh we knew that they caused cancer, we knew they were addictive and. And adults decided to let kids make a bad decision. A guy who's arguing about taking cell phones away is saying, cell phones are the new cigarette, so.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, so um from someone who works in a high school, um cell phones are the number one issue. Um that I hear um with, you know, um when interacting with families and teachers at meetings about, you know, cell phones. It's it's really hard to get a student to put theirs down or to leave it be. Um you know, those tiny, small amounts of times where, you know, they may need to access them. Um for other things is so minute when it comes to the total impact. Of students not being able to attend to learning, it's just incredible. Um you know, one thing I do have to say is that, you know, as a special ed educator, um you know, with technology. It's such a, the phone has its positive sides as well as its detriments. From a positive side, you know, students, you know, enter in your due date information in your calendar on your phone. Um update it on your task list on your phone, um you know, oh, take a picture of what's on the board if you're not good at taking notes. So those are some of the pieces that I would like to see how they manage that in schools, um since we're trying to make. You know, the this electronic age more user friendly in some regards, but I understand a hinder, so I'd like to see how the other schools manage. You know, that type of situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, um I'm Steve Adacol.
One concern I have is why are the students using the phone, right? And saying that as a person who does enrichment classes for as a volunteer in Holyoke Public School. Technically, of course, it doesn't count because I only see them for one hour a day and they're excited to be there. But I haven't had that problem with my middle schoolers. They do have the phones and we acknowledge that they are there, we take pictures, we play music. We use them to scan QR codes for educational activities, especially when I want them to participate anonymously because they don't wanna. Ask the question in front of their peers, but if they show up anonymously on the board, we can discuss those questions. Granted, that doesn't mean that that is gonna now be wow, the best thing. But the other thing that I don't want this to look like is that this is the solution. Because this is like treating symptom and not the cause of why this has happened. A student who is disengaged will rely on hanging out with the phone and checking it out and stuff like that. A student who is disengaged without a phone might be disruptive to class. So yes, this is something positive and useful, but we have to make sure that it's part of a bigger plan. Where we're actually taking into account the engagement and what is it that we're doing in the classroom to make it fun again, kinda like what we were talking about in the middle schools.
Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, um so obviously, I'm a student, so. This idea, this this idea might be a little, you know, like fuzzy to me, but I'm really trying. To find a way to word this without sounding like super, super duper like against or harsh. But to me, this is like, obviously, when teachers or staff would take the student's phone, like in middle school or elementary school, it's like. Oh, this is like, this is our property, this is our parent's property, you're not paying the bill, why are you taking it? Um so that to me, this is kinda like an administrative loophole in a sense. This is what just I'm looking, it's like, oh, instead of taking the phone, I'm just gonna put my hand over it, so you can't actually do anything on it. Um and in the sense, like what she was saying was like, we use these in in school, not just to text your friend, like, oh, I'm going to the bathroom. Or, oh, let's skip that class, no, we use it like to take pictures or like I for like, eh for an example of me. I'm on five different kind of leadership groups and today I got three different emails that. Like was addressing me and like needed my input or approval, like we have a fundraiser tomorrow. That is kinda being thrown together and we just constantly need to be engaged with that, not particularly in class because we don't wanna be distracted in class. But also on the very minimal amount of free time that we actually have to, I guess, address. Not academics or just to kinda unwind. Um so that's my, I also had another point, but I too forgot that, so um that's just my input.
You're turning into Ms. Brunel. So um thank you, um my only question in regards to that, so I know you guys are saying that this company will offer you. The um. The bags and such, how many of those um demagnetizers are they gonna, are they offering?
Yes, so.
First.
So they'll come, they're they're they uh they're gonna, they representative came on Thursday and did a walkabout. With um Tal and Mr. Otre at the two sites, um and then they're gonna come back with a proposal for what they think is. Beats their their typical model, so um Chickaby High School has two ways of getting into the building. Uh earnings, and so they've got, and then on on the on dismissals. Um they they do the same two doors and they've, I think they have four total, um for a high school, that's about twelve hundred kids.
So how organize is that as everybody's trying to get to it?
Yeah.
To get out the door.
It it it, you know, it works pretty, pretty okay, I mean, there's a steady flow. Um and I think kids just have to, they get used to kinda timing. They go, kids who have to catch buses are, you know, are first in line and and uh kids who are walking know to like. Avoid the crowd and three minutes later and go up there and have no hassle.
So they leave with yonder bags?
Leave with the yonder bags, they come to school with the yonder bags.
Okay. All right, so thank you so much. Um for that presentation, we're gonna go ahead and move on to new business. I know there's um, I'm gonna be quite honest, this is more like an FYI. This is just a reminder, we cannot vote on anything. So uh the new business of the field trip overnight out of state travel, obviously, both things already occurred. Um if you noticed, um December fifteenth, the grade four Dunninghugh students went to the Connecticut Science Center. Does that already happen?
Yeah, so I wanna just get into the habit, like when when we are no longer in receivership, these are things that the school committee has to approve, so. Like those, me trying to work towards that, I wanna make sure that whenever I approve. Uh and out of, it's anything out of state and anything overnight, this particular field trip was out of state in Connecticut.
Yep.
Um so I wanna make sure that as a regular item, whenever I approve an out of state. Uh field trip to a school that you guys get an update on that.
So if if we're gonna try to get back into the swing of that, can we do it before they actually go?
We can certainly strive to do that, yes.
I'm just saying.
I will say, it's gonna, it's not a.
Typically, when it's the school committee that used to approve it, we would approve it before it happened.
I mean, this is gonna take some getting used to from our principals and our teachers as well, they're used to being able to just, oh, we got a field trip. I forgot, Mr. Soto has to approve this one, and they get it to Sam. Um and so like, we're gonna do our best to communicate with principals that this is the expectation, they already know the policy of overnight and. Uh but, you know, wanna make sure that we're getting you regular updates and whenever we can bring it before it happens, that that's gonna be the expectation.
All right, great, all right, so we're gonna move on from that one, that like I said, that's just an FYI. Um the next one is the fiscal year twenty-three budget report. I know, Mr. Soto, you you wanna go ahead and speak on that?
I just provided uh an update, you gotta pack uh um you gotta report. Um when you got here today of a current year snapshot of where we're at. Um and then a a high level overview of what the picture looks for next year. Uh obviously, the the main thing being that next year is the last year we have this esser. Money, uh you have some information there that you, some of you may be used to uh see already, but I I was just hoping to get this. In front of the full committee because I know that um you know, before it gets to the full committee, the the sub finance subcommittee could. Uh usually gets it, so I'm hoping that gets referred to the subcommittee so that we can do that. This one and the next one.
This one and uh the fiscal year twenty-four initial budget, right?
For this FY twenty-three budget report, I guess, just make a motion to move to finance committee?
So I don't, can we vote on that?
Not voting, you're just moving.
So you're, so it's a recommendation to move it to the to the finance budget from it, subcommittee.
Yeah, sorry.
All those in favor?
Uh roll call.
Roll call, sorry, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Sophia?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Colon?
Yes.
It's Feliciano. Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore? And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, yep, Mr. Wellahan?
Yeah, um thank you, yeah, so we'll um uh discuss this in uh subcommittee. I spoke with um uh Mickey, Mickey Brew just just briefly. Um I told him that I would touch base with you, hopefully, um we'll get a meeting after the first of the year.
Great.
And we can go through um some of this information. Um there was a good um article today in the Republican, um just kind of um. Um details some of the uh the foundation budgets throughout the state and the inequalities of those. Um budgets um based upon the uh the the city or towns makeup. And, you know, um they have the the gateway cities are funding their their budgets. Um below or at the um net school spending and then you had um the wealthier communities. That are in excess of um seventy-five percent. Um above the foundation budgets such as Wellesley, seventy seventy-seven percent. Brookline eighty-three percent, Newton seventy percent, Lexington sixty-five percent, Cambridge hundred and twenty-four percent. So these are just wealthier communities mainly in, you know, the Boston area, suburbs of Boston. Um so this just kinda shows, it proves what Mrs. Brunel's been saying for for many years, just on the um the gateway cities are getting. Shortchanged um from the state, um uh again, this is, these numbers are before the um uh the current. Um Student Opportunity Act, but it's just evidence, hard data, talking about data tonight, it's hard data, that the gateway cities are getting shortchanged, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wellahan, and the next item was the fiscal year initial budget projection.
Make a motion, move that to finance committee also?
A motion to move to the finance subcommittees, there a second?
Second.
Okay.
And just quick discussion?
Yep, any discussion, Mr. uh Mayor Garcia?
No, I was just gonna say, so here we are, December. Um coming early January, budget instructions will go out as a report at last coming, I'll make sure that you guys get a copy of that too, so you're following along. So uh. Well, and just to make sure that between now and. May, finance committee is meeting regularly. Um or collaboratively with the administration and just kinda try to understand more or less. Um budget requirements, commitments and so forth, in the hopes that by our May? Although by May meeting or June, maybe?
Yeah, May or June, the one thing I wanted to highlight about this year that's different than any other years, that we have a new governor coming in. And when that that in that odd year where there is a new governor, they have a little bit longer. By statute to release their budget.
Yep.
So normally, it's the third Wednesday or third Thursday of January where we get our official numbers.
Mm-hmm.
This upcoming year, I think it's gonna be.
A little later.
February or March.
Okay.
Where we'll know exactly.
Yep.
So normally in January, I'm able to tell the city, this is our net school spending number. And for like, anytime a new governor comes in, they get that extra grace period to release the number, so I would expect that.
So all the. So all the work and discussions will take place, I'm anticipating in the finance committee. So any member that wants to know the real meat and potatoes, you know, feel free to attend those meetings. And then coming at year end, I don't know, May or June, there'll be a full report back to the committee, the, the high level report on the budget. Hopefully, we can get that, even though no votes required to this body, but we can practice it. Can do our vote before I submit my budget, the full budget, to the council for their initial approval.
Well, we, we still have to hold our public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll do that and then right after that immediately follows ours as, um, we're accepting.
Yep.
The budget. Mr. Callamore?
Yeah, I think it's important that now that we have a subcommittee of city council and school committee, that this should be brought up to them also. So that they have figures for them before they really finalize out. So they have some questions to ask us.
Yeah, I think that, that is a good idea and I'm thinking, how can, so would it be the finance subcommittee meeting first? Then, um, then it goes.
We can put it on for an, uh.
All right.
Chair, um, then.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Lefebvre?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Mr. Willehan?
Yes.
Mr. Callamore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Great, motion passes unanimously. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for October seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion to accept? Got a.
Make a motion.
I got a motion, you're seconding?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson? Okay. Any discussion? You're not, hearing no discussion, can I please have a roll call vote, please? Oh, did I, oh, you, you did raise your hand, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Kennedy's name is spelled correctly. I'm not sure if it's, it is spelled correctly in the minutes. Uh, I'm not sure, is K-E-N-N-E-D-Y? Is it?
It's a type, so, um, Ms. Garcia will be going through just the typos, um, and, uh.
That'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so roll call vote, please?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Lefebvre?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel? Ms. Rivera Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Mr. Willehan?
Yes.
Mr. Callamore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Going on to ongoing business, we have three things that were just FYIs. We wanna make sure that we keep them on. On the agenda, you know, so you guys are getting the updates, but it's FYI. If you read through it, are there any questions, comments, clarifications that anybody had on any of the three? So rezoning announcement, chronic absenteeism, or the middle school building? I'm gonna have you do that. No? Yes? Okay. Mayor, Mayor Garcia?
I, I have an FYI, but it's not listed on, on it. Is that okay if I gave an update?
If you wanna do it as an announce?
Perfect.
Do you want it that way?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, so seeing that nobody has any questions, again, these things will keep, keep popping up because, again, we wanna make sure we're monitoring our chronic absenteeism. Those are things that should be on our radar, rezoning, all that kind of stuff. Mr. Willehan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just on the middle school, build an update. I, I know Mrs. Brunel's been doing a, uh, great job on that committee. Um, do you wanna mention that one of the, uh?
Yeah, she wanted me to bring in, in updates from the committee.
Okay, then I'll hold my thought.
Uh, so it was, you were assigned to that committee, so it's like, go right ahead. Give it, give it now. Go for it.
So it's been, um, quite an, uh, eventful month for the school building committee, to say the least. Um, we decided to interview architect firms. Uh, the MSBA was highly encouraging us to consider model schools. Um, so we interviewed three firms and, um, post-meeting, we had some pretty frank discussion with amongst the committee members. And we felt there was some information missing from those interviews, primarily, uh, figures regarding site. Uh, the MSBA will only refund a certain percentage, uh, certain things around site costs. Um, and being that PEC is a challenging site, we felt like we weren't given clear figures regarding the firm's, um, numbers regarding site. Uh, so we, we decided to invite two firms back for follow-up questions and that was, uh, excuse me, I'm so bad with remembering the names of the firms. I have it right here, though. Uh, so one was Jones Winsted and Jones Winsted was the firm that designed the PEC building the last time when we were trying to get two new schools. Um, so the committee obviously highly favors that design. Uh, we felt that the design was tailored to, uh, not just the students' needs, but the educational plan that the district put forward. The firm spent a lot of time in Hoyoke to know the lay of the land per se. Um, and then the first firm that we had interviewed, they just seemed to really have their head wrapped around the financing aspect. And they seem to be able to potentially come in, um, much more affordable. Again, we felt like we needed some figures regarding the site plan. So we decided to bring back two firms out of the three for further interviews. Um, but while we were meeting, discussing, uh, that, we ran that plan, we're always running our plans by the MSBA to make sure that they feel that we're doing our due diligence within the committee and structuring things in an, in a appealing way. Um, and then we were kind of, um, taking it back when we received a resignation letter from Jones Winsted's architects. So, um, they've decided with, to withdraw through the process. Um, and speaking with the MSBA last week and a meeting with myself, uh, Mayor Garcia, Mr. Soto, Aaron Linville, and of course Margaret, who is our operations manager, you know, it comes to find out firms back out, you know, they get a vibe of the meeting, the meetings are recorded. Of course, firms can watch them back and get a sense of things. Um, I think we're, we were extremely disappointed, uh, because we wanted to be able to have, uh, the best options available to us and to be able to make a decision as a committee for what we felt was best and not, um, not based on now what we're limited to. Um, but it is what it is. The MSBA's been notified, uh, we've discussed it as a committee. And so now we've decided to bring back both of the other two firms for follow-up interviews. Um, and those will be conducted on January twelfth. Um, so if anybody's interested in tuning in, um, our next meeting is actually January second. Is it the second? The first Thursday of January, we have a meeting. And then our second meeting of January is when we're doing the follow-up interviews. So the good thing to note with where we are in the process now is it, it's more, much more likely we're gonna end up with a model school. Um, there's pros and cons to, you know, all situations. One of the pros is there mu, there is the potential that the MSBA will reimburse us more of the schematic design process, um, expenses. Um, but we'll know the details, uh, once we move forward. So on the twelfth, we'll be interviewing the two firms again. And then the committee will hopefully be voting by the end of that meeting on which firm we would like to move forward with. And then from there, we would negotiate a contract, basically how much they're gonna charge us to alter their design to fit our programs and our site. And then once we, uh, finalize that, then we would, uh, have the numbers and be going in front of finance again, uh, to rediscuss the amount, uh, granted for feasibility and the next steps moving forward. Um, if anybody ever has questions, you can certainly follow up with me or Aaron Linville, uh, on my email, which is of course on the city's website. But, you know, I think that this withdrawal threw us for a loop and it set us back a meeting or two. But it's just one more, one more step in the process to hopefully getting, uh, the students in Hoyoke what they need desperately, which is a new building. So unless you have anything to add, Mr. Soto and Mr. Garcia, I think that covers that for now.
Any questions or comments? So, updates from subcommittees? Nobody else has had any subcommittee meetings, right? Nope. All right, so there are no updates. Moving on to announcements, I'm just gonna say real quickly and a friendly reminder. January, that wasn't it. Oh, I'll let you say that one. I was gonna just remind everyone that on January third is the organizational meeting. That's a quick meeting, that's just to vote in the, the vice chair of the Hoyoke School Committee, and then the meeting's done. We're, we'll still have our regular meeting, um, um, in January after that. Okay, so now it'll be?
Yeah, we just wanted to remind everyone that we had, uh, we have a DPAC meeting on December twentieth, which is tomorrow. And that is at six P.M. Um, any family members interested in joining? Uh, we had a great event last week with CPAC at the merry-go-round and also the, I thought the Kelly Community Dinner was a huge success. We had a, a lot of people there. It was really fun, able to connect with a lot of families and, and just overwhelmed by the amount of volunteers that, that were there to help, uh, you know, make that great night possible. Um, I wanna, you know, thank One Hoyoke and Nairobi and Izzy for starting this a long time ago and, um, you know, Justin Chavez, um, rest in peace. Uh, also a huge part of, of one of the first, uh, Kelly Community Dinners that, that we had. And, and that tradition is, is hopefully continuing and, uh, it was just a really, really great night.
You know, they seem to always do stuff when I'm out of town. I was actually flying in, um, when everything happened. So by the time I got to my home, it was already nine P.M. Everything was done. Uh, Mr. Willehan?
Thank you. Um, I just, um, double check what days we're meeting in January. I know the third Monday is Martin Luther King Day. So we probably can't meet that night.
Right. So, um, sixteenth is Martin Luther King Day, so we can move it to the twenty-third. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak with Ms. Garcia because we have to do the, the schedule, um, for next year. But also, um, the vice chair will then, um, update or, or change the dates as they, they, that person sees fit.
Thank you.
So, but for now, that's why I just said January third is a definite. Um, Mayor Garcia?
Yep, I just have two updates here and, um, and I must admit, you know, as we were talking about earlier about trying to be better in how we filter information of the school board, um, I, I, I thought, you know, perhaps this would be the time to offer this update, but going forward, when, when things like this happen, we need, let's, you know, try to be better at bringing it as an agenda item. But the first update was around the accelerated repair project, which I'm sure Anthony can probably speak a little better too than I can, but as far as the funding strategy is concerned, um, it's an MSBA, they accepted us in, correct? Um, it's gonna be in a design phase, which I brought forward to the council to fund using monies that we had in capital stabilization. So we'll be, um, paying for that through that. And if and when we get to implementation phase, um, we're still trying to figure out the financing, but just internal discussions, you know, we've kind of thrown out there, possibly going half and half using Esser and ARP funds and the accelerated repair projects, you're talking about replacement of windows at Lawrence.
Yeah, windows and doors.
And doors, go ahead.
Windows and doors at Lawrence, McMahon and, uh, partial Dunne Hues. Uh, the, the Dunne Hues extension has newer windows, so, um, they didn't, they didn't approve that portion of the building. And then, uh, boiler at Dean, Dean has a boiler that's really, really old and needs to be replaced. So unlike the core project that we're working on, this is truly an eighty percent reimbursement. Um, it's, I think, you know, seventy-nine percent, eighty percent. Uh, so, you know, uh, the, this, I just wanna thank all the city councilors that have, you know, approved all the previous ARP projects because they, they really mean a lot. You know, one of the best things you could do to an old building is put, you know, new windows and doors in and allow natural light to come in. Go to McMahon, you can see those like foggy, like real, like terrible windows. They have an, an impact on how kids feel when they're in classrooms. So, um, the, the, the city council has always been supportive of it because we're getting eighty percent reimbursement. And I just wanna acknowledge that and thank them for that.
And like I said, as we, you know, as I'm thinking about this update, just considering where things are and I take full responsibility, but it just didn't dawn on me to include this as an agenda item. But in the future, as we consider planning for capital upgrades, that we just put it on the agenda, even if it's for just a normal update. Um, I know once we do get in control, there's gotta be in votes. Or the joint council meeting, that should probably be going there, absolutely. The other important update, and I gotta give Mildred a shout-out for, um, an earlier communication asking, hey, what's going on with this? Is a recent million-dollar donation that took place, um, I, um, that was offered or given to the city. We're currently in, in, in limbo with it, with trying to understand of whether or not the council is, has the legislation body of the, part of, is to accept all grants, but this isn't necessarily a grant. So that's up for debate, so where that stands. But again, just full responsibility, I think, you know, in the future, whenever these things come up, you know, we should put it as an agenda item in front of the school board as an FYI, this is happening kind of a thing before it goes out to the council. Um, just for communication transparency purposes. But, um, did, did you wanna share anything about the, um, anonymous donation?
Yeah, I just, it's a, so I, I wanna say four or five months ago, I got, uh, a letter from an attorney basically saying like, we selected you and we wanna give you over a million dollars. And I was like, this can't be real. So I actually like, this is how I got, you know, I actually referred this to the city solicitor's office, like, hey, can you look into this? Because it sounds too good to be true. And it turns out, it was actually true. Um, the one condition about this funding is they, they wanna focus on energy upgrades, right? Um, so all of it is gonna be used to upgrade some lighting that, old ballast lighting that, um, i- is really a drain suck. Um, and, and, you know, get more LED, like energy efficient buildings. So looking into it, I, I, you know, I can't really disclose, they're giving us this money under the condition that like, they don't want any attention at all. Um, you know, my, my sense is, you know, they've probably had to do this as a result of some sort of legal settlement or something like that. But not gonna, you know, again, I, they're giving us a lot of money. I don't wanna ruin it. Um, it's gonna be put to a good use. Um, and, and, you know, we wanna, wanna, uh, try, you, you know, we wanna comply with the, if their wish to remain anonymous.
On that front, though, um, again, when things like this happen, whether if it's a, a grant that we're receiving, do some, um, investments in our public buildings or fund, you know, getting in the habit of bringing it forward to the school board for review or, you know, I don't know, an update before it goes out anywhere else or to the council for, you know, their approval, so that everyone's in the know. Cause I know that once we, if and when we do get to a point where in local control, that's gonna be under the directive of this body. And, you know, so we wanna start getting into that habit, so.
I press it, I don't press it. Any questions, comments? No? No, go ahead. What were you gonna say? You look like you wanted to say something. Oh, yeah. Um, so being that Ms. Garcia's not here, can you do the roll call for when I ask for it? So is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
We have a motion seconded by Mr. Willehan. Roll call, please?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Lefebvre?
Yes.
Brunel?
Yes.
Rivera Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Oh, he doesn't vote, sorry. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at eight twelve P.M. I want to wish everyone a happy holidays and a safe and happy new year. Thank you. See y'all next year.